Thank you very much. Good morning. It's the 4th of November and this is the Growth, Infrastructure and Waste Committee, number 10 for 2021. I'll call council attendants and all our own intended are in attendance. Good morning to you all, and there are no apologies. On our call for any declarations of interest on matters on the agenda this morning, there'd be no declarations of interest. I'll move on to business outstanding. There are nil. So I'll move on to confirmation of the minutes. So I've moved that the confirmation of the minutes of the G I W committee meeting nine of 2021 on the 7th of October be accepted and be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Milligan. I'll open it for any discussion. There'd be no discussion. I'll move the move those minutes to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to the officers' reports. And the very first one is on e-scooters and Ipswich. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this? No, in that case, I will move recommendations A and B together. That recommendation is that council conduct an e-scooter pilot in the area of Springfield Central, as detailed in the report, and that outcomes of the e-scooter pilot be reported to a future G I W committee meeting. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Tully. I now open it up for any discussion. Thank you, councillor Tully.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This is a matter that I strongly support as part of a trial. I think there's a lot of issues which the officers have canvassed in examining the background to this and the issues that need to be identified and considered at the conclusion of the trial. The area we're talking about is generally from perhaps just north of the Springfield Central Railway Station, and then further through the Orion area, possibly out to USQ and maybe to the edge of the Spring Mountain suburb. It's an opportunity for us to utilise the technology, which has been well established in Brisbane. I think one of the issues will be the the amount of use in a relatively confined area, and the economic analysis, which I guess will be done by one or more companies for the duration of the trial. But it's certainly an opportunity for Ipswich to get into the modern technology. Can I say, though, that there are examples in Brisbane where the rules set by the Brisbane City Council, and I believe the state in relation to insurance and the legal issues involved, are extremely important. And I would think that we could give a commitment to our community that all those issues will be identified during the course of the trial, and some of them, of course, for the purposes of the trial. But the safety of the community is one thing that will be paramount going forward after the conclusion of the trial.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other comments? I guess I note that there is no cost to council. But yeah, I think in discussions we've had, it's the safety of the residents will be really important, and look forward to the results coming forward to our residents and to the community to hear their views. In that case, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item three, which is the Augusta Parkway Urban Street Light Trial. Do I have any questions? Actually, may I ask the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Please.
Yeah. I've asked for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern. Please let your name and your job title.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Peter Tabullo, General Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services.
Mr. Tabullo, is this a programme, a trial that Springfield City Group support?
It is, Mayor.
Lovely. And the money, where is the money coming from?
The money would come from the Town Centre Transport Fund, which council currently has approximately about 1.6 million sitting in that fund.
And who contributed to that fund?
That was from development that occurred within the town centre over a period of time.
Okay. Thank you. I think councillor Tully had some questions.
Yes, a more technical one in relation to the reference to the roundabout at the corner of Augusta Parkway and Tournament Drive, and the lighting of those, and that's the entry point into the Brookwater Golf Club. I've noticed that there's three established trees there. Two of them, certainly from a driver's point of view, appear to be dead. They certainly have no fresh leaves on them since winter. So perhaps if we're going to utilise that, you know, the lighting just for one tree mightn't be brilliant. And hopefully, we might be. And they're reasonably established eucalypt trees. So I assume they're eucalypt trees.
I can take that up with the members.
Because obviously, I'm supportive of this. Lighting in communities is, you know, it's got a bit of a wow factor, and it helps the community. And Augusta Parkway is the busiest suburban road in the city of Ipswich, besides the state highways. So yeah, if those trees could be looked at as a matter of priority, I think that'll be important, because that seems to be fundamental to have a nice segment of lighting in that roundabout.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Tabullo. I'll move the recommendation that council support the Augusta Parkway Urban Street Tree Lighting Trial, and endorse the allocation of funds not exceeding $330,000 from the Springfield Town Centre Transport Fund, and subject to the Springfield City Group agreeing to cover the cost of maintenance of the lights for a minimum of two years following the practical completion of the works. Do I have a second for that? I'm getting a nod from councillor Tully. Thank you. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We move on to item four, which is the Cameron Park Swift Leagues Club. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? Yes, please. May I have the relevant council officer come? And just while we're waiting, I note the recommendation has got basically three options for us to consider.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Brett McGrath, Property Services Manager.
Thank you. Councillor Doyle, you had some questions?
Um, thank you. Some of this is the the land that we're talking about.
That's correct. It's the existing, no, it's the existing footprint that is operated by Swifts. However, the lease hasn't been updated with the extra area that was added on, I think, back in 2009. So as you can see, the first plan there is lease D, which is the leased area under the lease. And then in 2009, we've extended the car park around. However, the lease wasn't updated with the new plan. So as you can see, the last survey plan there is a draft survey plan, and that's to update with the actual areas that they use. And that's the proposed area for sale.
I guess the residential of you and the users of that park, if we are to sell that particular piece of property to a third party, there will be no impact, I guess, to the usable space for the residents that use that part of that big and accurate.
That's correct. Yep. Yep. It wouldn't. It's only it's only taking the area that they currently use, and that's that the rest of the park remains open to the public.
Mr. McGrath, I think it's probably good to clarify. This office came to us last year, and during that process, Swifts withdrew. Would you mind giving an update? Obviously, there was an issue of contention over the maintenance of the building. I think council held that that council had reduced the rent of the lease, and that Swifts would take on the maintenance. Subsequent legal work found that that's not necessarily the case. Do you mind providing an update as to what happened and why? And I guess I seen the report where it says that it'll cost over $5 million to maintain the facility. But it's also my understanding that just to get it up to scratch now is going to cost about $4 million.
That's correct. So the original lease was intended to give Swifts an opportunity to lease the building, and that was in 2001. And then the rent was supposed to be scaled up to be 10% of the land value. So that was then amended in 2009, where we gave a reduced rent down to $12,000, then plus CPI increases. And at the same time, they were given an extra 10-year option on the lease, as well as we had negotiated to, there was a new table that was drafted from a condition assessment report for a maintenance schedule at the time. But however, it wasn't updated or amended within the lease at the time. So I guess we were rather understanding that it was an agreed sort of maintenance schedule. But Swifts sort of have claimed that they haven't been aware of that. So we've reverted back to what the maintenance schedule within the lease is now. So I've drawn up a table that sort of reflected who's responsible for what there. And then we've gone and assessed what our obligations are under the lease to maintain that and the costs associated with that. And when we've looked at it, a lot of the asset is starting to fail and getting to end of life. So the preferred method would be to do a whole refurbishment of the building, and then maintain the asset from there. And the cost of that, as I said, over that 10-year period within the report, I think it's 5.2 million, around that. Yep.
Right. So if we selected option A, a recommendation A, there will be immediate cost to the council of about $4 million.
Yes, there's some immediate works to happen now, which we've had a quote for, which is the air conditioning. And we've replaced the lift already, but there's a lot of other work that should happen straight away as well. So, yep.
Right. I have to ask, Mr. McGrath, are there other leases that we have in the organisation where we were under the assumption that the leaseholders were doing maintenance, and that's not the case? Have we gone through the organisation to see if there were any other exposures like that?
We haven't probably gone through everything to find everything. But yes, there are others that have been like that. Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions, Mr. McGrath? Yes, councillor Tully?
Thank you. Just two questions. That leased area, proposed leased area and proposed sale area, does that include the land right up to the edge of the footpath on Brisbane Road?
No, it doesn't.
No. So that's a separate green sort of area in a way, even though there's a roadway through there.
Yeah, still.
And there's no legal impediment in council selling directly to the lesssee?
There's not, because they're a community group. We can apply the exception under 236 of the local government regulation and sell it to them directly.
So so that an option would be to go wider and look for tenders or persons to submit proposals?
The problem is, if we go to tender, then we're selling it with a lease in place, and it's not a lease that's on commercial terms. So it's likely to not attract any potential buyers on that basis. Yeah.
Understand. Thank you.
What would be the commercial leasing? Because at the moment, it's about 16,000 a year.
Within the report, I've said that once it's fully renovated, and we're just looking at the average floor plates are about 1,000 square metres. So that's two levels, 2,000 square metres, and about $350 a square metre would be probably the market rate gross. So you're looking at $700,000.
$700,000 a year.
Gross, yeah. For a market market rent.
Councillor Conville.
Thank you. Mr. McGrath, we're looking at option C. From memory, there were some concerns about the quality of the community consultation last time. I just wonder if we're going to be able to, are you aware if we're going to be able to do that better this time?
Yes. So what we're proposing to this this time, and we've had a discussion with with Swifts about this, is to appoint an independent consultant to run it. And both parties will split the cost of that. And what will happen is we'll develop a scope to formulate the community consultation, and that external consultant will run the community consultation. And then that report, once that's finalised, will be provided back to council for consideration. Yep.
And Mr. McGrath, I actually attended some of that community consultation, I think, back in 2019. There was no one there from Swifts board, and certainly the plans didn't show the community what they were planning to do. And my understanding is that there was some hesitancy about that. What will be shown, if we did proceed with option C, will there be proper community, will the full plans be shown to the public?
No, I think it's going to be more of a high-level overview of what we're going to ask of Swifts, to just give us an indication of what their proposal is and some costs associated with that. There's probably not going to be detailed plans, no, to, I mean, because that costs a fair bit of money for them to outlay to produce detailed plans and requires a lot of planning and consideration to do that. So we probably don't have the time to go to a full detailed.
Last one from memory, we asked Swifts to give the detailed plans at least to their members, so their members were aware. Are they prepared to do that this time? Do you know?
Yes, I believe what they have produced are some schematics that they had last time. I believe that there's no problem with showing what that is. I think it's just more so the detailed plans, because they still have to go through a period where they work out what they want to do before they finalise anything. So, yeah.
On my note, it's very important that they show those plans to their members.
Sure.
Any other questions, Mr. McGrath? No, thank you very much, Mr. McGrath. Now, for us to go into discussion, we have to have a mover and a second. So I would move recommendation C, purely so we can obviously open up for discussion. The recommendation can always change as part of as things go. So if I could move recommendation C, the possible disposal of land just following community consultation, do I have a second for that, councillor Fekner? Sorry. Now we can move into discussion.
Yep, through you, Mayor. Yeah, I speak in favour of recommendation three. I know that we're rehashing this for the second time. However, with new information coming to light, recommendation C seems to prove an option for us financially. $5.2 million obligation over the next 10 years is a hell of a lot of money for this council to outlay for an asset that's that's at the end of its life. This could be a potential opportunity for Swifts to do something with it to improve the look of the building, something really great for the community. And I'm sure that will all come out in the consultation. We'll be quite clear about what we want to see in that consultation. We'll be there representing our communities of interests, particularly our residents down in Bevel. But I look forward to a much better and much more comprehensive community consultation than has previously happened, to take the community on the journey. But what sits in front of us right now is a very tricky, complex historic issue, where they've exercised the first of their two options to extend for 10 years, to to try and wind that lease down, to try for council to try and get out of that. It's a very difficult situation for us to be in as well. So I think that recommendation C allows us to go to the community to ask them what their thoughts are around this, but to be perfectly honest with our community about what that financial implication is. And $5.2 million is a lot of money if we were to retain that asset. And, you know, and it's not, it's simply not an option, not in good faith, to try and unwind this lease and kick them out when they've when they've indicated that they've exercised the first of the two 10-year extensions on that original lease from 2001. So I speak in support of recommendation C, and welcome the community consultation that will happen.
Thank you, councillor Fekner. Other, yes, councillor Ireland?
Mayor, I'm just wondering if it'd be possible for us to retain the land but let them buy the building. I don't like selling land if we own it. You never know what's going to happen in the future, but I'm just wondering if it's a possibility.
Right, that'll be to you, CEO. Call Mr. McGrath back. May I ask Mr. McGrath to come back to the lectern?
I was going to make a general comment just in response to that. The owner of land, you know, whatever's a fixture on the land is part of the land. So but can I just raise this issue? And I support paragraph C, as has been moved. It's the word at market value, which are a pretty typical term. But the owner of land is entitled not to sell, is under no obligation to sell at market value. What concerns me is the amount of repairs that supposedly have to be made. It's possible that they could get the, if we lock ourselves into the words at market value, they could get the land and building for nothing.
Thank you. And I think I'll direct to Mr. McGrath, he's here. You had a question. Councillor Ireland?
I'm just wondering if it's possible to retain the land and sell the building like they do with a lot of the aged care places at the Gold Coast. They don't own the land that their house sits on. They have a 99-year lease or something. I was wondering if we could do the same.
Yeah, that'd be a totally different model to what we're used to delivering. And it would probably just make sense to keep the lease in place, I think, to off that if we if we wanted to go down that road. Yeah. Yeah.
So so the answer's not, it's the answer's not no?
I don't think so, no.
So it's something that we could look at?
Yeah. It's really effectively a lease to, at least a disposal of the use of an area. So really, the lease is what does that. So I don't think, I don't really have to do some detailed work to look into that type of model. Yeah, that's.
Thanks. So can I, can I, sorry, Chair, can I just ask, councillor Tully's asked a question about market value and what happens there. Do you mind taking us through that, please?
Sure. So, yeah, the value would consider the condition of the improvements and the land as well. So we had it valued on a different area two years ago, and that was, I think, $1.4 million at the time. So when the value takes that into consideration, it's it's all the works that need to be done and the condition of the improvements at the time when they value it. So I think that the value wouldn't be changing too much from when it was valued two years ago.
Councillor Tully?
Yeah, no, I understand that. It's just that theoretically, if we use the words at market value, they, depending upon any changes in the industry and the amount of repairs that now need to be carried out, we could be locked into selling it, or giving it to them for nothing.
Through through you, Mayor, can I suggest that we potentially amend the wording then to refer to not less than market value, something along those lines. So, you know, open to negotiation, but at a minimum would be not less than market value, which is our obligation at law, selling an asset belonging to the city to attain market value. But hopefully, we might achieve a bit more than that.
Take the words out. So I can barely, I can barely hear you. Sorry.
Sorry. It was just trying to get some unanimity with it. But I think because it's early days now, and without locking it, it sells into a model, can I suggest to councillor Doyle, if she's moving an amendment, just to take those words out?
It would be a variation, wouldn't it, just to?
Well, just to delete those words at market value, and give us wide flexibility in negotiations.
Yeah. Okay. And I think myself, I'm happy with that. Councillor Fekner as the second. Yep. Thank you very much. Now, two lawyers at work.
I think, Mayor, Chair, I, we have received advice, and Mr. McGrath might be able to elaborate on that in terms of the terms of the lease, and just noting councillor Ireland's question. Given the terms of the lease, we, council isn't able to end the lease unless the lesssee is in breach of the terms of the lease.
That's correct. Yeah, the lesssee would have to be in breach for us to be able to terminate the lease at all, or if there was a major incident that made effectively the improvements unusable. Yeah. But there's sort of no way of us terminating the lease, unless the lesssee is in breach of it.
Thank you. And have they had any breaches over the last few years?
We haven't issued any breaches to them, no.
And it's true that they've got almost 20 years left in their current arrangement.
They're in their first 10-year term, and then there's another 10-year option after that, which is in their favour to, yeah, exercise that option.
Are there any questions, Mr. McGrath? No, thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Thanks.
I'll open back for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge councillor Ireland's comment about, you know, reluctance to sell off our assets, particularly parkland. And I absolutely agree with that. And I think that's where a lot of, I guess, nervousness came within our community from residents. I do remember at the time, a lot of fallacy about council selling off Cameron's Park. So when, in fact, we were only looking to transfer out that that small portion that is already occupied by Swifts. So I think it's important during our consultation with the community that it's very, very clear, the footprint is no greater than that already occupied by Swifts. And just thinking about councillor Ireland's proposed model, we would, as spoken, we, you know, Swifts would need to be in breach, or potentially agree to the terms of a new lease would be our only other option. And I don't see why they would do that, given the terms under the existing commercial lease. And I think the model councillor Ireland is referring to is very common, becoming common practice within the residential seniors accommodation, but wouldn't be commercial enough for Swifts in this situation. Just.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond. I wasn't suggesting that we would keep the building. I'm just suggesting we keep the land and they can buy the building and take the profits from that. But but that that was just a suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And while we're talking about suggestions, I mean, one thing we did look at, too, is not only the repair of the building, what will be, could we knock it down and reclaim all of Cameron Park? But it comes back down to the lease. The lease is is there for another 20 years. That's just the way it is. So there is no ability for us to do that if that was if that was what the council were looking to do as well.
And through you, Mayor, waiting that out is a $5.2 million financial implication.
And that's what we can't. Yeah, through you, Mayor, that's.
Well, that should be more. That was only the first 10 years, not 20. Yeah. I guess for me, when I look at this, and I know councillor, you use the word reluctance. I had that same, too, reluctant to sell council assets. And that's why we sort of looked at all all different different options. And when it came to us before, we are dealing with a legacy issue. Under the previous council, paperwork was not submitted. You know, that that whole maintenance schedule should have been done by the previous council. It wasn't done. So we are now, we now who have that exposure of that maintenance. That's not what was on the table to us last time this came to us. So to me, things have changed. So to me, we now look at the fact that we have that minimum $5.2 million obligation. The other thing is that the with the consultation, I understand that Swifts, when they do consultation, will want to keep some things commercially in confidence. I understand that. But I feel very strongly that they need to be very upfront and show their true intent, their whole intentions, not true, the whole intentions, the whole plan to their members. They need to do that to their members. If they don't do that, I can't see that I would support it. But they need to show their members what their plans are in going forward. That's my my view in going forward. So that consultation really needs to happen with their members, but also with the public as well.
Just a point of clarification, Mayor, when you say former council, you're not referring to the political administration, which would have no oversight over the contract management and the asset management of this particular asset?
Just that it was under previous people who are not not here at council anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Just through you, Mayor, I think it's worth highlighting that Cameron Park has a bit of money in the three-year capital program. So we'll be doing some exciting upgrades there as well. So as we potentially see this asset, if agreed by the community through that consultation period, handed over to Swifts, there's some really exciting upgrades in the pipeline for Cameron Park. And I think that's worth highlighting in the context of Cameron Park. And I think that's worth highlighting in the context of Cameron Park itself.
Thank you, councillor Fekner. If there's no other discussion, I'll put Recommendation the Varied on C, which I'll just read out for clarity, is that council consider possible disposal of land to Swifts following community consultation and consider selling the land and facility to Swifts after considering, sorry, I'll wait till it's completed. Finished speaking? Thank you. So the Varied motion states that council consider possible disposal of land to Swifts following community consultation and consider selling the land and facility to Swifts after considering the results of community consultation on disposal. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item five is the acquisition of drainage easement INF 04249-11 Panton Street Wood End. So this report is on the, concerning the acquisition of a drainage easement on that particular property. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this item? No, in that case, I will move recommendations A through to D. Do I have a secondor for that? Thank you, councillor Fekner. I'll open it up for any discussion. Yes, please. Not next one, okay, sorry. Is there any discussion on item five? No? Thank you very much. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Item six, will I pause for a moment? Yes, councillor Ireland?
Mayor, I wish to, in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I wish to inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item six titled Acquisition of Drainage Easement of 50 Blackall Street East Ipswich. The nature of my declarable conflict of interest is that I went to school with one of the owners and I'm still friends with her. So I have to put in the name of the related party?
No, it's okay.
Okay. So I don't know where I go to then.
Are you leaving, what do you propose that you do?
I won't vote on it.
So you'll voluntarily leave the room?
Oh, I couldn't do that. Okay. As a result of my conflict of interest, I will now leave the meeting while the matter is considered and voted on.
Thank you. I appreciate councillor Ireland, your proactiveness in declaring that. Thank you. Thank you. Item six, Acquisition of Drainage Easement INF 04251, 50 Blackall Street East Ipswich. And this is a paper concerning the acquisition of a drainage easement in East Ipswich. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this particular item? No? I'll move items A through to D. Do I have a secondor for that? Thank you, councillor Kuncelman. I'll open it up for any discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, knowing that councillor Ireland is not in the room and the matter is dealt with. Do we mind calling councillor Ireland back in? We're now onto item seven, which is the procurement, supply and delivery of waste collection and compaction trucks. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please? Actually, I may wish to speak to, is Mr McAllister here? Thank you. Sorry, Mr White. Could you please state your name and your job title?
David McAllister, Resource Recovery Manager.
This is quite a large purchase, nearly $8 million. Could you outline succinctly the need for these 18 trucks and what would be the implications if we didn't?
The current fleet of trucks, there's currently 24 sidearm vehicles in the fleet, which this 18 will replace the oldest group of that 24. And there'll be a follow-on purchase required to replace the remaining group. Garbage trucks work a very hard life and they last six to eight years, dependent on what type of work they're doing. These vehicles will reach end of life within the time period and this purchase will replace them to transition into the new fleet.
Have you factored in the growth? We have so many people moving to Ipswich.
Yeah. As I said, this is the first portion of a fleet replacement. So this is replacing current fleet. The 24 that we currently have will require to grow with the population growth over the next few years. So the next round of replacement will actually start to replace the remaining, the remainder of that 24 plus, then we'll start to factor in the growth. Basically, you replace the vehicles as they age and not all the current fleet was all bought at the same time. There's a range of about two to three years across the current fleet.
And were you part of the procurement evaluation?
Yes, I was, ma'am.
Are there any other questions of Mr McAllister? No, thank you very much. I'll move A through to D, the recommendations. Do I have a secondor? Thank you, councillor Fekner. I'll open it up for discussion. Just see this, I know you're very passionate, councillor.
Yeah, I guess I'm happy for our waste services and the truck drivers that will be getting their new gears soon, long awaited new gear. Because I know how hard that they work and the trucks work themselves and the hydraulics and mechanisms and all of that that can go wrong. So I know there was a day that we had three down potentially.
I'm getting a four from Mr McAllister and the five. Is it five?
Yeah, so whilst this looks huge on paper, it, you know, it's essential and overdue.
Thank you. Thank you, deputy mayor. There's no other comment. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Move on to item eight, which is the procurement of residential glass and curbside recycling. May I ask the, again, probably Mr McAllister to lectern?
David McAllister, Resource Recovery Manager.
Thank you. Mr McAllister, this is a supplier that we've used before or is it our current supplier?
So Visi is the current supplier to the majority of South East councils.
And again, is this, the contract that we're entering into, will accommodate the growth that we're expecting? Especially with our push for increased recycling. We now have glass back in our yellow top bin.
Yes, so part of the contract negotiation to take this forward will be that accommodation of the changes to the stream we've made in the last few months and the impact that has on our items like container refund and the growth in the city. So yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other questions of Mr McAllister?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr McAllister, I note that this would be for two years and four months. Once that, and that is due to that provider being the only available. Would we foresee that the market situation would change by then? And that moving forward in the future, there will be other options?
So specifically, we've asked for two years and four months to take us to A, to the end of the financial year 2024. And then we've also been asking for two one-year extensions to that arrangement. I will note that this is a negotiation process that will have to commence with Visi. And as you point out, councillor, it is relative to the potential outcomes of the sub regional alliance process. It's also ongoing for recycling capacity in the South East.
So this arrangement, the extensions would be at council's discretion?
Generally, extensions are at both parties' discretion. And again, that would form part of a negotiation conversation. So either or. So basically, if we say no, there is no extension.
Okay.
Yeah. But the extensions have to be available to the contractor as well.
So at the end of financial year 2324, then council would be at liberty to pursue other options?
Yeah, and we would know that long before that timing window due to many other factors at play. So ultimately, extensions are decided long before that and the timing would have to match the outcomes of the other process.
Very good. I'm satisfied with it.
I think based on what your questions, Mr McAllister, are you able to provide a very high level, I know that's going through a grant application, but the QRMF, the Queensland Recycling Modernisation Fund application that we have in? And how that links in with you?
I'm actually thinking if there is an update because there hasn't been very much forthcoming information. So as councillors are aware, we are obviously progressing a sub regional alliance conversation with Logan and Redlands for a regional materials recovery facility. And as part of that process, as the mayor points out, we applied for grant funding through the fund. That process, we did get confirmation just the other day that they have assessed it or they've started the assessment process and it's met the initial hurdles of the process. And they've advised that they're on track for their timeframe, which was January, February, to have feedback.
Thank you, Mr McAllister. Any other questions? No, thank you, Mr McAllister. I'll move for recommendations A through to C. Do I have a secondor for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. Any discussion? Yes, councillor Ireland?
Mayor, when we were up in Mackay for the LGAQ conference, we went and visited a resource recovery centre. And it has been working so well. It was very clean. It wasn't noisy. So I'm keen to see us start to progress something the same. They said that they've had a few reiterations of how it's worked. But, you know, if a smaller place like Mackay can have it, I'm really keen for us to get started on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with you, councillor. I think it's quite exciting, the sub regional alliance with Logan and Redlands councils and the opportunities that it has. So let's hope that we get that funding from the state and the federal governments for the month. Any other discussion? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. A through to C. Please raise your hand if you support. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Now move on to item nine, which is the procurement, paint back paint product stewardship scheme extension. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No? I'll move recommendations A through to C. Do I have a secondor for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. In opening up for discussion, I'll just point that it is no cost to council, even though they could ask for a levy. And it seems a very popular scheme that we run in council. Any other discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. If we go to item 10, may I ask the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please? I think Mr Madigan? The Infrastructure and Environment Department Capital Delivery Report. Ma, thank you.
Morning, Graham Martin, manager, capital delivery branch.
Thank you. Mr Martin, are there certain parts of the organisation that you're concerned about the delivery of our capital works programme?
I probably wouldn't put them in the concern, but they're starting to get a few on the watch list at the moment. Some of those are around projects that have been identified already by the officers as being at risk. So they're being well managed. Some of those, one of those in particular is Whitwood Road rehabilitation site, where there's been more illegal dumping on that site than had been expected at the time. So it's causing some variations to the works on site, the delivery of the waste vehicles as well that was just put forward. Something that due to the timelines across global supply chains is causing concern about whether that will be delivered this financial year. And I think realistically, at this stage, we'll say it won't be. But again, that's not due to poor management or under delivery. It's circumstances outside of the procurement officer's control and the officers running the programmes.
With the Whitwood Road, I can see there'll be, it looks like to be a $2 million saving.
Potentially. That may have evaporated during the last month since we put the report together. Again, on the back of some additional illegal dumping. And also some of the capping material is unsuitable to go straight over the top of with what was the proposed capping layer. So we've got a little bit more work and geotech investigation going on at the moment.
We've got some other large projects such as the Springfield Parkway and the Springfield Green MacIntyre Road upgrade. Are you able to provide a brief update?
Yes, Red Bank Plains Road, we're well through the procurement process at the moment. And that is on track to be presented to full council meeting in middle of November. And the Springfield Parkway, that is due to be presented to council at the next GIW committee at the beginning of December. That one, we were hoping to get or had planned to have in place for this mid-November due to some more complicated interactions with the park and ride facilities, the lines facility and how we actually stage the traffic control works. That's taken a little bit more negotiation with the proponents who put forward. So it's on track but taking a little bit more negotiation than we had originally allowed.
Any other questions on the capital delivery programme, Mr Martin? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move that this report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a secondor for that? Thank you, councillor Kuncelman. I guess in discussion, I just commend the organisation. When you see the graph certainly on page 205, you can see a far more even spend, which means obviously the workload's been a portion better. But also in the report, I think pages 200 and, pardon me, I think 210 to about 219, also provide that visual and a dot point update on some of our major projects, which is really good for residents to be able to see that. So thank you very much for providing that additional reporting for residents and us. Thank you. Any other discussion? No. In that case, I'll move that this report be received and contents noted. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We'll move on to the exercise of delegation report. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No? In that case, I'll move it. Do I have a secondor for that? Thank you, councillor Kuncelman. Any discussion on this report? No? In that case, I'll move that recommendation. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item 12 is the Planning and Environment Court Action Status Report. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on that? Councillor Tully, would? May I have the relevant council officer to the lectern, please? Please state your name and job title.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Anthony Bowles, Acting Development Planning Manager.
Thank you. Councillor Tully?
Good morning. I just have one query on the attachments of the outstanding matters in the Planning and Environment Court, Division Two, Spring Lake Holdings. It says that without prejudiced discussions occurring, matter was adjourned until the 25th of October 2021. Where does that stand at the moment?
So at the moment, we are preparing submissions for the preliminary points of appeal that deal with jurisdictional matters. So one of the preliminary points relates to whether the Planning and Environment Court has jurisdiction or should the matter be held through the ADR process, sorry, the alternate dispute resolution process of the Springfield Satcha Plan. So we're going through the first points of that and there'll be a further adjournment from there.
So this could stretch into next year at this time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, after the chair, I'd just like to make a comment about the report. There are two new appeals that aren't appearing on the report.
Please do.
So I thought I'd just mention those as they're quite important. The first of the two new appeals is for the application by Oneless for the landfill in Jeppe Peely. That was lodged on the 15th of October. There have been a number of corespondents in this appeal. So we've filed our entry of appearance. State government have filed their entry of appearance. But certainly quite a few members of the public have entered into the appeal. So Willow Bank Area Residence Group, Cornelia Turney and Craig Roth, some of these folks played a big role in the previous landfill appeals. So we're seeing that representation again. And a second appeal. And a second appeal for a childcare centre in Pine Mountain Road in Brussel. It is a submitter appeal against council's decision to approve the application. And that was lodged just recently on the 26th of October. So that'll appear, both those may as well appear on next month's list.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move this report be received and contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. I'll open it up for discussion. Just carrying on from Oneless, the feedback I've had from the community, they're not happy at all. But obviously, we will continue to fight for our right to respect the residents. You know, I think what we proposed was very fair and reasonable. It allowed recycling, but just no new, brand new landfill. So just to let residents know that we've heard them. And cost, yeah, it costs a lot of money. Unfortunately, they're bleeding the rate payers. Okay, I'll move that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item 30 is a notice of motion. I'll hand over to you, councillor Ireland, for you to move your notice of motion and wait for a second to inspect to it.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a notice of motion concerning the council that I gave notice at the council's ordinary meeting of the 21st of October 2021. And I would like a report to be presented to the Growth and Infrastructure and Waste Committee no later than March 2022, outlining the short term and interim options that can be implemented to assist the agri tourism industry in Ipswich prior to the adoption of a new Ipswich planning scheme. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. Would you like to speak any further to that councillor Ireland?
I believe that there's been a discussion paper that has been raised and there were certain conclusions drawn from the discussion paper, but it didn't come up for a resolution. So I'm just bringing it forward to get a resolution on it and to look at how we can help the, there's eight businesses listed. And I'm just looking at how we might be able to assist them to build their businesses up before the 2032 games. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the second like to speak to it? I guess I'll raise it. And the deputy mayor and I attended the ITON, the Ipswich Tourism Operators Network, on the 15th of June. And we were, I think, you know, cornered by some of the agri tourism operators, asking us for, talking about our planning scheme and them wanting to grow. So based on that, I sent an email that night to the general manager of PRS and CCED and asked them to look at this, the deputy mayor and I did. And on the 18th, sorry, on the 11th of August, council emailed a paper to all us councillors on an agri tourism discussion paper. And a briefing was held on the 1st of September to councils and that's on that particular thing. And I think councillor, I think you had something on, you weren't able to attend that particular one. And then earlier this week, there was a briefing on, as you'll know in the paper, on the short term and immediate priorities. I don't think you were able to attend that one either. So there is work in place. I'll support this because there is work in place to address the immediate and short term options. And some of those were discussed on the 2nd of November as well, on that afternoon. And I think there was a plan to come back to council, I think around February anyway. So any other discussion? So I should say to, had some discussions with the Chamber of Commerce. They're very keen to be part of the discussions as well. Sorry, councillor Milligan.
Yes, Mayor, I agree with you that having observed the work that is already underway by officers with regards to this matter, it's heartening to know that we'll probably have that report sooner rather than later.
And just note the work too with the deputy mayor as the chair of the economic and industry development in the push for that as well. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of this notice of motion, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. There are no other matters arising, so I'll cease this meeting at 9:53. Thank you very much. Oh, next one in 10 minutes. We'll do it at 10 past 10 is the next meeting. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Fekner and councillor Madsen.